My gosh, you guys are quiet. That's impressive. All right, I'm going to try to call you all to order if I can. Hi, everybody. I'm Bobby Regan. I'm a City Club Governor and co-chair of the City Club's Programming Committee. We're thrilled to welcome you to our final of four programs where we have introduced all 12 of our new Portland City Councilors to the community. So, we're happy to be joining you here at ERCO's Community Center. The Immigration, the Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization, or ERCO, provides a wide array of culturally specific services to help migrants, refugees, and other diverse community members thrive. We greatly appreciate their work in our community. Before we begin, I ask everyone to please silence your phones. City Club of Portland is proud to host nonpartisan public forums, debates, and research to help Portlanders make informed decisions around elections and public policy. City Club is committed to providing space for people to gather and engage in civil/civic dialogue to enhance respectful discussion and positive change. Members make City Club run by providing ideas, leading conversations, doing research, and planning programs that address issues that are important to our local community. To support our mission and participate directly in City Club's work, become a member today. Visit pdxcityclub.org/membership and let us know how you would like to engage. And if you join tonight, you can take $40 off your annual membership dues using discount code NEW40. Many people are responsible for developing tonight's program. Special thanks to Robyn Denberg, City Club Governor, who joined me in co-producing this series. Thanks also to Sam Metz, co-chair of the City Club's Programming Committee, and Kayla Kennett, City Club's Communications Director, for their hard work in bringing all the details together. We also want to thank our series partner, The Standard, and our season sponsors, AARP and Fight Against Sex Trafficking, for their support. And finally, we thank our community partners, KGW News, X-Ray FM, and the District One Coalition for helping us reach new audiences for this important conversation. Please mark your calendars for our next series of public programs called Prescription for Central City Libability. Our first program in this series is this Friday, March 7th, at 11:30 a.m. at University Place Hotel in downtown Portland. Now to tonight's program. With the adoption of Portland City Charter changes, Portland moved away from its longtime form of government. Using a ranked choice voting system, Portland voters elected 12 city councilors in November with three councilors elected to represent each of four new city council districts. These councilors were sworn into office in January, so less than two months ago. Tonight's program features city councilors from Portland's District One, which covers all neighborhoods east of Interstate 205. It also crosses I-205 to include the Lentz and Sumner neighborhoods and Portland International Airport in the north. It's home to the East Portland Community Center, Palbute and Lentz Park, Leach Botanical Garden, Gateway Discovery Park, and the Portland Pickle Stadium. It includes five different Portland school districts: Portland Public Schools, Park Rose, Reynolds, David Douglas, and Centennial. More families live in District One than in any other Portland city district. Thirty-one percent of all households include at least one child. District One residents have lower incomes than other districts with a median income of about $61,000, and 16% of residents live below the poverty line. According to the 2020 U.S. Census, District One is the city's most diverse. While the majority of residents are white, 16% identify as Latino, 15% identify as Asian, 10% identify as Black. It is also the district where the most Portlanders speak a language other than English at home. The Portland City Council has historically been significantly underrepresented by councilors living in District One. Only two Portland City Council members have lived in this district in the city's history, meaning that the interests and concerns of these neighborhoods have long been unrepresented at City Hall. Our new District One city councilors are Candace Avalos, Jamie Dunphy, and Loretta Smith. Each will tell us a little about themselves in their opening remarks. We're excited to hear about their hopes, dreams, and plans, both for District One and for the city in general. So, thank you all for sharing your evening with us. Our program tonight is moderated by Sophie Peel. Sophie is a Well AM at Week City Hall reporter since 2021. She has also covered state politics, including reporting in 2023 that led to the resignation of a former Oregon Secretary of State. She previously worked for NPR in Georgia, and we are so pleased, Sophie, that you have moderated all four of these City Council programs. Thank you so much. We want to thank those of you who submitted questions as you registered for this program. Sophie has been given all of the questions and has incorporated many of your themes into her own questions. Tonight, at the end of the program, we will also have a short live audience question opportunity. You'll be coming over here for that. As I wrap up the intro, I invite you to stay after the program for an informal meet and greet with our new city councilors. You can also meet City Club representatives and hear more why you should become a member tonight. Please now join me in welcoming our City One, District One city councilors. Sophie?
Well, thank you, Bobby, and thank you to the City Club of Portland for having us. Like Bobby said, this is four out of four for us, so we're going out with a bang. Quick run of show. First 20 minutes, we're going to do District One-based questions. Second 20 minutes, we're going to do citywide questions, and then the last 10 minutes are going to be audience questions. We're also, the councilors are going to stick around after the first hour as well. So, if you didn't get a chance to ask your question in front of everyone, you can hopefully go find them after. So, I'm going to first start out by asking each of you to take one or two minutes to introduce yourselves. So, tell us a little bit about why you ran for office, what you see as sort of the district's biggest problems, and what you think you bring to the council that maybe no one else does. And we'll just start by going down the line. So, Councilor Avalos, let's start with you.
All right, thank you, Sophie. Hello, everybody. Good to see you. I am Candace Avalos. My pronouns are she/her. I live in the Mill Park neighborhood. And I'm going to start by saying, yay charter! This is an amazing opportunity to see and transform the way that the people interact with City Hall. You just heard all of those really harsh stats from Bobby. I think that the motivation to run for District One was, this is my community. When I knock on doors in District One, I see my family's story reflected back on that doorstep. And that was really important, that we are bringing those folks into City Hall. I've spent the last couple of years doing all kinds of different things, including being on the Charter Commission. I also was the ED of an organization, Verde. We're an environmental justice org, which is another big reason why it was important for me to run, because East Portland has faced a lot of environmental injustices. And that means lack of safe roads, lack of infrastructure, tree canopy. So, those were the kinds of things that motivated me to run. And then I'd say, lastly, I was motivated to usher in this new form of government and really change how East Portland is represented in City Hall. East Portlanders have long been ignored, and this is a chance to really bring City Hall out to East Portland. So, maybe I didn't say anything about myself?
No, you did a pretty good job.
Okay, cool, cool. I missed all the other stats, the Candace stats, but...
Councilor Dunphy?
Thank you. Wow, my voice is a lot louder. Hi, everybody. Thank you, guys, first of all, for spending your evening with us. It really matters. Showing up is a big deal. I'm Jamie Dunphy. I'm a Park Rose neighbor. I'm a dad and a husband. I'm the owner of two dogs, three chickens, a cat, and two goats. You know, and I've lived in a really incredible life here in Portland. I've lived a lot of different lives. I was a small business owner. I was a professional musician. But more than anything, I've spent the last 20 years in public service to our community here in East Portland. Starting, I was doing gang prevention in the David Douglas School District at age 21 at middle school, trying to save the lives of 14-year-olds. I wanted to be a teacher, but the teaching system was just so broken. And I decided it was my job to go try and fix the system that we all live in instead. And I've spent the last 15 years since then working for some really incredible organizations and some really incredible elected officials. I spent, I worked for U.S. Senator Jeff Merkley, working on social security cases, trying to help people navigate through complicated bureaucratic systems. And I spent five years working for Portland City Commissioner Nick Fish as his senior policy director. And in the last five years, I've been the lobbyist for the American Cancer Society, trying to, mostly trying to prevent our kids from getting a hold of those bubblegum-flavored vapes. You know, but I ran for office because I really saw this change of government, this new form of our charter, and the new opportunity before our community as something that I actually might specifically be able to be helpful with. You know, it's exciting. It's really exciting to have 13 new elected officials in City Hall. But we also have, you know, I had my concerns. I had my concerns about whether that system was going to work. And I do think it did. I think the election really ended up giving us a really solid group of adults who are serious about the challenges facing our community. And I'm glad to be helping wherever I can, you know, trying to uplift the voices of folks who are learning their ways and trying to help make them a little bit better at the jobs that they are now signed up to do. I'm really excited about this opportunity, but it doesn't, you know, my enthusiasm doesn't, shouldn't mask the seriousness of the challenges our community's facing: homelessness, addiction, mental illness. We have a lot of really big uphill fights and a big mess that the previous city council decided to leave for us all to fix. So, I'm excited for the work. I'm excited for the opportunity. I'm really just excited that you all are here, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Sophie. Good evening. You all can say "good evening" back. My name is Loretta Smith. I am a public servant. I'm a former staffer to Congressman and Senator Wyden and a former county commissioner for eight years. I am a resident of District One. I live in the Wilks neighborhood. And I ran for this office because I saw that we would have district representation. And I also ran because of Jordan, Ada, and Malaya. They are my grandchildren, and I wanted them to have representation, representation that looked like them. I didn't want them to think that they could just survive in this city. I wanted them to know that they could thrive in this city. I wanted them to know that they too could be a city counselor, a mayor, anything they wanted to do. And, you know, I have run for this office two times before. But I have to tell you something, Candace. We ran in 2020 together, and so did Mayor Wilson. And when I was looking at the field of candidates, because I got in a little late, sorry, but, but I said, "The people who were likely to win are the people who came back." Now, this is the first time that people who had run before came back, and then they won again. And so, you could detect the seriousness, the commitment, and the dedication to public service. And I figured that we needed some more experience when I jumped in, because when I jumped in the race, I was like, "We need some folks who have a little bit more experience and to add with the new folks, and I think we'll have a great mix." I didn't intend on running against 16, 18 people, but what it did was, it made us hone in our own messaging about what we cared about. And so, I ran on public safety. I ran on trying to figure out a way to deal with the unsanctioned homeless camps, how to make sure that small businesses, that they had access to capital, they had access to someone who understood what it meant to be a small business person. For the last four years, I've been the founder of Dream Big Communications, which is a government relations political agency that work with nonprofits to help identify local resources, state resources, and federal resources. And so, for me, I have just continued doing the work that I have always done. I worked for Senator Wyden for 20 years. This is what I know. This is who I am. I could make a goo-gob of money somewhere, but it was, it was calling me back, and I wanted to make sure that we got a good foundation. And just like Jamie, I think we got the 13 folks who really make a solid group of people who have a cross-section of issues that are going to be important for everyone. So, I'm glad to be here, and thank you all for coming on an evening that you could be doing something else.
Thank you, Councilor. Briefly, I'm going to ask that each of you talk about one hyper, hyper-specific thing in District One that you would like to see improved, whether it's a specific intersection that is particularly deadly, or if it's a homeless hotspot that you really want to get those people into housing, or if it's a specific business that you know is struggling that you want to help get on its feet. What is a very hyper, hyper-local thing in District One that you want to see improved? Whoever can think of it first gets to go first. And I'll give you a chocolate.
One hyper, hyper thing that I am really clear about is that one thing that we have and was highlighted in our Transportation Infrastructure meeting the other day is that we have a lack of sidewalks in District One. I didn't realize how bad it really was until PBOT gave us a presentation and showed how District One, and surprisingly, District Four in the West Hill, we don't have as many sidewalks as other places around the city. So, I am going to be hyper, hyper, trying to improve, expand, and maintain the sidewalks that we have and to put it on steroids and make sure that folks out in District One, that they have safe, secure neighborhoods that children can walk to school at and families can go to the parks, people who have mobility issues, that they're able to get around their communities like everyone else. That is what I am going to be hyper, hyper hyped about.
Thank you, Councilor Dunphy.
Mine's, yeah, we're going real niche, right? I want to see what we can do with Rocky Butte. Rocky Butte has sat as a nuisance for the last 60 years, since the freeway was built. And in any other sane park system, it would be the crown jewel. And in Portland, it's completely inaccessible. I want to fix that. I want to see what we can do about bringing additional, you know, the access to recreation areas, the access to green spaces in District One. We have some amazing gems. We have Powell Butte. We have Leach Botanical Garden. We have some, you know, Lewitt View Parks. But it's not enough. And any opportunity we can do to get additional access to outdoor green space and go walk under a tree, I think, and also take a, an area that is currently a liability and turn it into an asset and activate it and make it so it's something that the community actually wants. I'd like to try and see what I can do with that.
Thank you, Councilor Avalos.
Trees. Trees are really important. I think that our district is not set up for our climate future. And at my old organization, we did a lot of work to also improve energy efficiency in our district because between buildings and transportation, those are the two largest emitters of greenhouse gases. And it particularly affects East Portland. And I actually had a lot of people on the doors talk to me about the lack of tree canopy, you know, they, it's not safe for their kids. They don't have a way to cool down. So, we, luckily, we have the Portland Clean Energy Fund, and they are going to make a millions-of-dollar investment in trees. But where they go, I don't know yet, and that's what I'm going to be fighting for. I'm going to make sure that we get our fair share of tree canopy in East Portland.
And we water them when we plant them.
And we water them, yes, so they don't die.
The city has struggled to do that in recent years. No, so, Councilor Avalos made a great point. So, the Portland Clean Energy Fund, Urban Forestry, which is the city division that plants all our trees for the most part, over the next five years, they're getting $152 million in PSEF money. So, they should plant a lot of trees with that. And if they don't, we should get on them for that, because that's a lot of money. So, District One, I think, a lot of residents have always felt like the forgotten stepchild a little bit for a number of reasons, partly because there's been very little representation, and they just face, you know, kind of more tougher issues than other parts of the city. A big part of this charter reform measure was to ensure that District One residents felt heard by government. And maybe only one of you, one or two of you can take this question. How are you going to turn that around? How are you going to make District One residents feel more heard?
I'll start. I think what's really important and what I learned when I was knocking on the doors of East Portlanders is that they are hungry to be engaged. They just haven't been asked to be engaged. And I have long felt that all of the tactics that we use to run a campaign, those should not stop when you get elected. Those grassroots efforts to meet people on their little literal doorstep, I think, is how we're going to turn East Portland into a place where people want to be civically engaged, are going to come out to elections, and they're going to feel pride for the representation that they have in their East Portland councilors. So, that's what I'm planning on doing.
Another thing is, I think that Candace is right. Coming out to neighborhood meetings, talking to folks, following up when they tell us something. I was at an EPAP meeting last month, and I learned that there were some streetlights that hadn't been replaced when they said that they were. And I followed back up with them and went to PBOT and said, "Okay, what's going on? Are we working on this?" They called me back. About a week later, said, "You know, it was on our list, but we're going to do it, and we're going to do it by the 7th of February." And they did what they said they were going to do. And I think when community leaders that are the head of neighborhood associations, when you respond and do what you say you're going to do, then they start believing that it's important to have representation. It's important to be able to have folks on speed dial and say, "This or that is happening." And that's what we started to do. I have a staffer right now who's over at the Wilks Neighborhood Association meeting. We're going to all the neighborhood association meetings. We're showing up every month. We're trying to figure out ways to build bridges into City Hall, because we know it's important when everyone is engaged. And if we can't get everyone engaged, it's because of lack of trying, and that won't be an issue coming out of Commissioner Smith's office, because we're trying to build those bridges and making sure that everybody's voice is heard.
Thank you, Councilor Dunphy. I'm going to ask you the next question. District One, we have out here a lot of the places in the city where gun violence is higher than in other parts of the city. We have a lot of those hotspots, especially concentrated in certain neighborhoods. You know, I think there's always been a quite lively debate about what helps reduce gun violence, whether it's more alternatives to policing, like Portland Street Response and other efforts, or whether it's more cops. And I'm going to ask you guys this question, because I do think you guys have a variety of takes on policing and what does quell gun violence. So, Councilor Dunphy, let's start with you.
That's a big question. As I said earlier, the beginning of my career was spent trying to do gang prevention in a middle school. I watched as good kids who had nothing better to do and parents who were trying their best but were working multiple jobs. I watched as kids bowed to peer pressure and made bad mistakes. And I watched how that fundamentally affected their lives. And two of my, or three of my students died. Six of my students were shot and lived, and one is currently serving a long sentence. We only have one community center out here. We don't have places for young people to go and be engaged and active and not get themselves into trouble. We don't have enough police. But we also don't have enough opportunities for community to activate spaces. I think that truly, we get community safety with community. And I believe that every time that we can take these troubled spaces that are allowing bad behavior to flourish, and we can instead inject positive community activation in some of those spaces, that reduces the burden on the number of times we have to call police. And I think that having the right responder for the right call is really important, because there are absolutely very scary situations in this community in which the only appropriate response is a highly-trained, highly-accountable police officer with a gun. But we use them as a general-purpose tool for all things involving government, and it means that we are all seeing worse service. So, I think it's all of the above. It's positive things, and then also making sure that we are consistent in law enforcement.
Thank you, Councilor Smith.
Thank you. I think we need both. It's not either/or. It's both. We need, we need public safety officers to make sure that they're policing in our, in our communities and that when we call, when we have troubles, that they actually come. We also need community members who are going to call folks like me. You all heard about the shooting last night on 82nd Street yesterday. Well, there was a response to that shooting at midnight last night. I got a person who called me, who works for the City of Portland Ceasefire, to say, "This is what we're doing to try to calm down, you know, the emotions of folks." I don't know if it calmed down, because we had another shooting in response to the shooting yesterday at midday today. So, trying to get a message out to community to, to not retaliate and to not go back out, because we could, we could do that back and forth every day. And so, having relationships with community members who, who need a little bit of direction and guidance on how to talk to folks and what should they say and how should they say it, I think that is so important, in addition to have relationships with folks who are on the police force, because it makes a big difference.
Thank you. Councilor Avalos, I'm going to ask you this question, but make it a little bit tougher, because I think everyone, if we could have more of everything, I think most people would want more of everything. That is not our current outlook right now. We cannot just have more of everything. So, in a really tight budget cycle, when we're facing a $92 million general fund shortfall, when it comes to policing, what do we prioritize and what do we deprioritize?
What's important about police is that they have, like Councilor Dunphy said, a highly skilled job, right? And it requires, when, when we need police, it requires a specific kind of intervention. I think what Councilor Dunphy is talking about is how do we fill in all of the other intervention gaps, right? You're right, we are stretched for dollars right now, and looking for opportunity is going to be tough. But I think the lack of opportunity in our community is the driver of community violence, frankly. So, yeah, maybe that's not exactly being as specific as you want, but I do think that we have to use our resources more wisely. So, we need to send a fire truck when we need a fire truck. We cannot keep sending fire trucks, police cars. Those are expensive resources to low-acuity calls. That is draining our budget. That is why we have $42 million in overtime from our fire and police. We should not be spending that much in overtime. We should staff at the appropriate level and use whatever money is left to fund the ceasefire program, to fund adding green spaces and trees. When you change a neighborhood and create a positive way to engage with it, it dramatically affects how people are existing in that space, so.
I'm going to break the rules a little bit and spending a little bit more time on District One specific questions, because I think they are a high priority. So, one that I guess, it's a little bit citywide, too. But like I mentioned just a couple of minutes ago, the city is facing a $92 million general fund shortfall, and that is not even including a much larger shortfall when you think about the Portland Bureau of Transportation. They are having to decrease their budget quite a bit because they have external funding sources similar to the Parks Bureau. And City Administrator Mike Jordan last week made it pretty clear that one of the things that is likely on the chopping block or potentially on the chopping block are community centers and parks, shutting down parks. I think in a prior form of government, it would be kind of likely that those parks would be located in East Portland. I'm curious, not all of you have to answer this question. What lengths will you go to to make sure that parks in East Portland are not on the chopping block? Will you tie yourself to a seesaw? What will you do?
Tie myself to a seesaw or, you know, go into a swing and not leave, bring my grandkids, and we're good at that. But let me say, parks, they have a steady stream of funding, so I don't know why they were even considered as a decision, Mark, because they're flush with money.
There, so, the Parks Bureau, no one really quite understands this, me included, but the Parks Bureau, there's a Parks levy. It's expiring. They're saying that if voters just renew the existing Parks levy amount, they are going to have to cut 25% of their... to have to cut 25% of their services. They are telling voters, if we don't double the Parks levy, then only if we double the Parks levy are we going to be able to maintain all our assets as they are right now. So they are painting a very grim picture.
So in '27, that's when the Parks levy is up. So just let me go back to what you said a second, and I'll be very direct with you. I am not willing to cut any of the Public Safety Bureau's budgets, police, fire, or 911, period. I'm probably the only one up here that's going to say that because I think it's so important. And people have to understand the rhythm of how we hire in the police bureau. It takes almost two years to hire someone. The reason why we have such a high overtime is because it takes that two years, and then we have a lot of folks who are baby boomers there retiring. And then once we, we just hire maybe 40 to 60 people, then we've got another 40, 60 people who are retiring. But we cannot afford, not in this climate, to cut the police budget, and I will not. I will fight to the bitter end about our public safety budgets because we cannot do that. And we have to be honest about budgets. Parks Bureau, like I said, they're flush with money. They have about 100 some odd FTEs. PBOT has 144 FTEs, vacant FTEs. They have money in their budget. So it's one of those, I've experienced this with local government in my years as a, as a federal assistant in my, in my role as a county commissioner. People will go to the thing first that, that most people don't want to cut, parks. So people will jump up and down, so you won't do it. But really, Parks has a lot of money in their budget.
I think they might take umbrage with that, but that's between you and them.
Well, they have a levy until '27.
They're fair questions. They are very fair questions, yeah. Councilor Dunphy.
Yeah, to the Parks, I can't verify that these numbers are 100% accurate, but more or less, we have twice as many employees working for Parks as we did 40 years ago. We offer about half as many services, and now we're being asked to double our investment in order to maintain. I don't like the way that the budgeting has ever been done by the City of Portland. We put up national monuments. When the mayor says, we're facing a budget crunch, everybody proposed what 8% cuts would look like. What I would love to see is we're going to streamline management, we're going to streamline service delivery, and we're going to figure out what we do really well and what we don't do really well, and double down on the things that we do well. What we do instead is we say, oh, 8%? Great, we're going to close all the pools. I dare you to take it. And that leads us with a situation where the next year, we're going to have the same fights. I personally want to see a significant change to the, to the structure within government. When voters voted to, for this new charter change, it wasn't just to change the elected officials, it was to change the way that the government serves us. And the previous government, previous city council, to some extent, started the work of breaking up the bureaus and out of silos and into service areas. But more or less, they just changed people's letterheads, they didn't even change their desks. Right now, the city has a central communications office, and there are 80 people across the city who have communications director, public information officer, or something like that in their job title. We have central procurement, and every bureau has a procurement officer. We have central equity office, and every bureau has an equity officer. We have centralized HR services, and every bureau has HR services. There is so much fat to be trimmed. There are so many basic understandings of how to run a city that we could learn from how other cities our size are running. Nobody who was building a city from scratch would build it the way we have. And let's never let a good crisis go to waste. This is an opportunity to actually make the hard decisions and set ourselves up for success in coming budget cycles.
Councilor Avalos, once again, I'm going to make this question a little bit harder for you.
Keep doing that.
Because I know you can take it. So the flow of the budget is that the city administrator releases his sort of proposed cuts, and then the city council really is the one that looks at that and either says, okay, sounds good, or nope, doesn't sound good, we're going to do our own thing. Because the city council is the one that actually has to approve the budget in its final form. And so when Mike Jordan, the city's administrator, came out with his proposed cuts last year, first, or not last year, last week, he only, he only recommended cuts that would have made up about a third of what we, we think we need to cut. And second of all, sort of all this organizational change that I think most city councilors are kind of upset hasn't happened faster. Mike Jordan made it clear that this is something that's going to take a year to two years. So a lot of it's not even really going to be incorporated into this current budget if, if he has his way. I don't think anyone on the city council is happy about that. So at this point, what, what are you guys doing, Councilor Avalos, to basically go back and say, no, 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 we want there to be big organizational change? What are the steps for the council doing that?
Yeah. Well, let me first say that yes to what Councilor Dunphy's saying. We changed the form of government, but it hasn't really changed in structure, and that needs to be addressed because the inefficiencies are still there. So that for sure needs to be taken care of. I think ultimately, it's also important to remember that, yes, we have the city administrator and the mayor who oversees the executive branch, and the whole goal of that is so that we can do this consolidation with the bureaus. But the council has the ultimate authority to decide the budget. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, his proposed budget, the one-third of the cuts, even, and after, we're supposed to get the mayor's proposed budget as well. You know, obviously, their insight is important because they're managing the executive branch and the bureaus. But I think this is an opportunity for us as council, now that we're not beholden to the bureaus, because I think what happened with old commissioners is that, you know, they had their little fiefdoms, and so of course, they want to protect what's theirs. And it became a competition. So now that we're free from that, I'm hoping that we can take the time to really unpack where are the inefficiencies, start making some of those cuts. I think, you know, my values are for sure ensuring that we're not doing drastic layoffs. We want to protect the frontline workers that are making our city work. So, you know, trying to cut the fat in middle management is important. And I think ultimately, we can force that conversation with the executive branch to say, you need to streamline this. We're not going to fund, you know, an equity officer in every single bureau. Why do we have this whole, you know, new equity, city equity officer, right? So let's put that in motion, and let's start in this budget by eliminating positions that are duplicative.
Thank you. Okay, switching gears to homelessness a little bit. Obviously, it is top of mind still, I think, for most Portlanders. And just when we thought the city had the biggest problem, Multnomah County a couple weeks ago said, we have $104 million budget shortfall in our Joint Office of Homeless Services, which is basically a joint office between the city and the county, but the county really is, has most of that, that money, and really controls the joint office in large part. And then they also said, the county also said, by the way, city, we also don't plan on funding the 850 pod shelters that you've set up over the past two or three years, which the city was under the impression that the county was going to fund those. So we have this huge problem, and it, it just feels like yet another step back. And I am curious, as council members, what you see as where you guys have leverage to, I don't even know what you could do, but where do you see having leverage in either pushing the county to fill this gap or pushing the city to fill the gap? How are you thinking about this problem?
I don't think we can push the county to do any particular thing, but we have this little thing called a IGA. And we signed it and said that the county will handle homeless and shelter services.
Intergovernmental agreement.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And so we signed that. I was there when we did the first one in 2016. And so, one, the previous council and the previous mayor, they created new Safe Rest Villages with one-time-only money, ARPA money, 90%, and then 10% of ongoing money. So I would have never done that and expected that the county was going to pick that up or say, we're going to have those conversations. If there was a budget shortfall, you know, where would they get those dollars from? So for me, if we think that that is the most important thing, is to do those Safe Rest Villages, then we need to cut $41 million from somewhere else so we can pay for the Safe Rest Villages. If we feel like we want to pay for those 1,500 shelter beds that the mayor is pushing, then we need to find $28 million in the existing budget and do that. We can't depend on another government to do what we should have never done. We should have never created shelters with one-time-only money and expected another government to pay for it. So it's just craziness.
Councilor Avalos.
Well, you're looking at the chair and vice chair of the Homelessness and Housing Committee, so it's squarely on our shoulders to address. I think ultimately, we cannot solve our homelessness crisis without the county. Let's start there. So our partnership is critical. So I am not in a place right now where I'm trying to, trying to pick fights or point fingers. I think ultimately, if there is a deficit, whether that is on the city side or on the county side, it affects the community we all serve, right? I think ultimately, I'll say, too, that at our next committee meeting next Tuesday, we're going to be bringing in the city to talk specifically about the intergovernmental agreement because we want to understand from the city side, what are we agreeing to? What's our relationship? And then as it relates to the dollars, I think what's important, too, about our unity is that if we're going to go to the state to look for help, they're not going to give us help if they see the city and the county quarreling. So I think it's important that we get on the same page with the county, we reassess the IGA, you know, as it relates to who's going to pay the bills or not. I think that's why we need to be united, because we need to find ways to increase revenue, we need to look to the state, can't really look federally for much help right now, and ultimately, come to a place where we are sharing that burden. So I just want to, I guess I'm just trying to explain the importance of that connection, and I don't really see it as the county or the city, I see it as both of us together.
Thank you.
Sophie, I do. I see it as the county or the city because I'm only responsible for the city's budget. I can't control what they do at the county. I will not be supporting ongoing programs with one-time-only money. And Madam Chair, you're absolutely right, that should go through your homeless shelter. But I was so amazed, yesterday, it came out in your, your paper, that Commissioner Shannon Singleton, she combed through that budget, those, those budget books, and found out that shelter money was being used in other places, like in the health department, instead of the joint office. So she found that $22 million. So, you know, numbers matter, and we can't fund things that is out of order. They all have to go through the joint office. And that's why I'm saying, if we want shelters, we should have waited until the county agreed to pay for our Safe Rest Villages and not just go forward and just build them and expect the county to pay for them. We have to make a decision. Is that more important than something else that we have in our budget for $41 million or $28 million, period?
Let me be clear, let me be clear. I agree with you. I do agree that we need to reassess who needs to do what. And I think in particular, because the city is the only one uniquely that is going to have to build the housing, right? So if we're doing, having to build the housing, dealing with housing production issues, and we're managing all the shelters, I agree that funding that with one-time money was a horrible decision and has put us in this deficit. So, yeah, I agree, and that's partly why we're going to be assessing the IGA, because I, I want us to make sure we know who is responsible for what parts of the system. Again, we all share the same population we're serving. But I think we need to take a step back from doing all of the sheltering work because that is the county's work so that we can focus on housing production. Because at the end of the day, it doesn't matter how many shelters you build, if you don't build housing, people are still homeless.
I forgot to ask my fun segue question to lighten the mood. Each of you briefly, what is a hidden gem in District One that you like to go to or something you like to do?
Leech Botanical Garden. If you haven't gone to Leech, it's like, they have the new Skywalk that they have there. It's incredible. Go check out Leech.
Leech Botanical Garden.
122nd and Foster. They're hidden, and they're amazing.
You will find me on Tuesday nights, and it's called Taco Tuesday at the Red Apple. 99 cents on Tuesday nights. That's where I get my dinner, and it is really good.
Are you going tonight?
If I can get over there.
Honestly, I love to patron our small businesses because we have such a rich diversity of restaurants in our district. We went to a screening recently called Food Foray on a documentary about, hey, Laura, about some of the international grocery stores in our district. So I love my little, I live in Mill Park, so about 122nd and Division. You have to check out Unique Fun Grill. That is like my go-to spot. And then the go-to coffee spot, because I don't actually drink coffee, is Cafe, Finn Cafe, right next to it, is like a boba spot. So I, I kind of live in that little corridor.
Okay, back to...
That was fun.
What?
That was fun.
Yeah, we should do more of that. Okay, well, now I'm going to go to like, maybe the worst question. So obviously, since the new administration in DC took over, we have seen a flurry of executive orders that are potentially really threatening to Oregon and Portland's status as sanctuary, as a sanctuary state and city. You know, I think all city councilors, it weighs heavy on their mind about how the Trump administration is going to trickle down to Portland and what your guys' role is in, you know, fighting some of those things, but also not engaging with, with Trump when he just wants to pick a fight. I think that's a very fine line to walk. But anyways, I am curious how you guys plan to protect sort of our undocumented immigrants in this city from this administration.
You know, we, we are a sanctuary city. The police chief has reiterated it repeatedly, we're not going to use any sort of police or city resources to coordinate on any sort of immigration enforcement. It's just not going to happen. And I will stand in front of the trucks myself if I have to. That's not a value of our community. You're not, you're not wrong, though. Portland is vulnerable. Portland is small compared to LA, San Francisco, Seattle, the West Coast cities that Trump has been picking on. And we're, we're particularly vulnerable to a crackdown. So I'm not trying to intentionally spit in the eye of the big orange man, but I will defend Portland values and Portland's laws with every tool I have, including my own body.
And I will stand right next to you. This is like deja vu for me. In 2016, when the president was, was voted in the first time, I authored the first county sanctuary ordinance at Multnomah County with Diane McHale and Chair Kofory. Because what I wanted to do is send out a message to immigrants, refugees, that we will not call the police on you if you are in our libraries, in our health clinics, in any county building. We're not giving names to ICE when you have court dates or any of those things. We wanted to reassure the public. We thought that it was so egregious how he was talking about immigrants that we wanted to give them some sort of assurance that we were on their side and we were not going to do it. Now, I've been trying to stay away from the orange man and not reaffirm our city council's sanctuary ordinance, but it may come down to that because he's decided that there's about $10 million in DOJ money that we're not receiving right now. And it's going to be tough for us because we're going to have to factor that in with our budget as well. So I will be standing next to Councilor Jamie Dunphy as he's putting his life on the line.
Same. I will definitely be standing with you. Hell, yeah. You know, this is personal. I come from a family of immigrants. I am not going to tolerate any, any of his BS. I think what's important right now, everything that my fellow colleagues have said, one thing that has come up to me recently that I want to look more into, the Trump administration is using all kinds of different ways to collect data on folks and track them, whether it's like through a homelessness system or any, obviously, all the asylum systems and all of that. But he's, they're trying to find ways to track more people and track the people that are connected to undocumented people to get more of them. I heard this from a children's center recently, they were concerned about that. So I don't, I don't know to what level we, where we can intervene, but I think it's important that we, especially seeing that Elon Musk is literally taking control of data, I don't know what they're doing with it. So this is a point in time where I think we need to collect less on people because I think that's going to put them in real danger to be in some kind of federal system. So this is kind of new and it's emerging, but that's what I'm focusing on right now. I think that's going to be critical, and I think we should have a role in protecting people in that way.
Thank you. Looking ahead four years from now, how will this city be better or at least improved from what it is now, either by your individual or collective efforts? Anyone can take this one.
Accessibility, that I want to be able to say that this community feels like they had access to representation and we were accessible to them, and we worked on their behalf. And they might have to say that we took the federal payroll taxes from the president. That's another thing that we can do in retaliation to what he's... That's another thing that we can do in retaliation to what he's doing. If he doesn't have our money, he can't move it around so that Elon Musk can decide who gets money and who doesn't. But I want folks to know that they had representation and they felt comfortable with their representation.
Thank you.
I really want to make it so that Portlanders feel proud of being in this place. I'm proud to live in Portland. I know we have our challenges. I know that there, you know, we've had better days. But I've, you know, I was a touring musician in my twenties. I got to go around the country and see other communities, see other places, daydream about living somewhere else. But I haven't found a place I love to live better, and I'm proud of this community. I'm proud to be raising my daughter here. And I want to make sure that everybody here remembers why they're proud to live here and give new reasons for people to feel proud, that we were able to address the hardest challenges of our time, homelessness, the fentanyl crisis, climate change, and to be able to move forward. We won't solve all of those problems in four years, don't get me wrong, but things are going to feel demonstrably better. And it has to. It has to feel better because this place is worth it and it's worth the effort. And I think that in four years' time, we will have that sense of pride.
Thank you.
There's a lot of discussion right now about the economic doom loop that I'm sure we've all seen in the news and just this narrative around us needing to, in my opinion, what I see the narrative saying is reaching outward to get help for Portland. What I want to do and what I think will show our success is how are we growing our own? How are we growing our businesses, growing our communities, not needing to say, let's attract another intel to come into our city? That's going to make our city or our economy better. How are we investing back in Portlanders who are investing in our city? I feel like that, to me, is how I will measure success. And in particular, what are those investments looking like in East Portland? Obviously, I'm focused on East Portland. We need to not only get our fair share, we need to get more than our fair share because we've been left behind for too long. So I want to make sure that we're bringing those dollars in here. Any dollars that are getting allocated across the city, I want to make sure we have the most of them. So that's how I'm going to measure success.
So we're going to go into live audience questions. I just want to say, I've done four of these now, and for some reason, I'm feeling strangely moved right now by this one, and I'm not really sure why. I've been crying like the past week a lot, so maybe it's just a continuation of that. But I just feel very, I don't know, I'm just feeling very moved right now. And I enjoyed all the other ones, but this one, for some reason, struck a bit of a chord. So live audience questions. If you have a question, please come up to Sam in the flannel. If you have a question, please, please keep it to under 30 seconds, and your question must have a question mark at the end. It cannot be a statement. All right, go forth.
So along with Mayor Wilson, particularly around his idea for shelter and equipment in the next 12 months. So what are your comments on his plan? How would you rate it from A to F? A is perfect, what's do it, F is not do it at all? And then is it feasible to take it into action?
You know, I will say that it's really nice to have an elected official who has a plan. And to that extent, you know, Mayor Wilson was elected with the largest turnout of any of us. And he actually seems to have a, I'm not totally convinced. I'm not totally convinced that his plan will work. I'm not totally convinced it's the right fit. I'm also worried about what we sacrifice if we do double down on what he is prioritizing. But he has a plan, and I'm willing to try and help see that plan through. I'm not willing to compromise on some of the other services that we're doing. We know that, for example, overnight shelters are an important part of the continuum, but they're just one part. And I wouldn't be willing to sacrifice the things that we know are working, like the tiny home villages, like some of the day shelter operations, some of the intensive services, and building supportive housing. But, you know, he has the largest mandate of any of us, and he's got a plan, and I'm, we need a plan. We need to do something. I will continue to ask really hard questions. I will continue to be deeply skeptical, and I will try to lead with our humanity in every conversation we have because I will not accept it if the mayor's plan is ultimately to just check a box so that we have enough shelter to meet the legal requirements and then suddenly use the police to sweep homeless people inhumanely. But obviously, we need to move with urgency. We need to try new things, and we need to build out the whole continuum of housing.
He has a vision. I don't know if it's a plan yet. So that's my answer. I think that it, I get the vision. Obviously, we all want to end unsheltered homelessness, no doubt. But like I said a few moments ago, building more shelters does not make people less homeless, right? So I think, yes, I agree, he's got, you know, a clear mandate from the people. People are frustrated. They want to see visible change. But what's important to me is that that visible change is actually helping that community, not just placating us because we can't see them. So I am really grateful that he has the motivation to work on this big issue and that he's spending all his time doing that. I hope he spends his time doing some other things, too. But I think, I'll give it a C because I think that it needs more work. I want to see more of what the actual plan is and how it's fitting into the larger plan.
Thank you. Let's, sorry, I think we're going to move on to the next question. Councilor Smith, you'll have the first go at the next one.
Thank you, councilors, for your service to the public. I'm a proud resident of Lentz. Tonight, when we go home, there'll be about 2,000 of our neighbors living unsheltered along freeways, under overpasses, and in some of the most difficult situations. What will you do tomorrow to provide, help advance the provision of emergency shelter services to our most vulnerable neighbors in District One?
And this is exactly what Mayor Wilson is talking about. I give him an A for effort and an A for enthusiasm. His plan is calling for 1,500 shelter beds so that people can have a place to stay at night. You say you have 2,000 folks over in Lentz. He's proposing to put 1,500 shelter beds so that people have a safe and secure place to sleep at night. Do I know if it's going to work? I don't know, but we haven't had this before, and we've had a housing-first model, and we've never had a shelter model. But I think we need to go back to adding shelters so that people can sleep safely at night and be able to offer them some services other places. So I'm supporting the mayor and his efforts.
Thank you. Next question. We're going to keep it moving, sorry.
Hi, proud resident of East Portland. My question regarding economic stimulus. We keep hearing about revitalization of downtown. We keep hearing about doom loops and Echo Northwest deep dive studies of downtown. Where are the deep dive studies of East Portland? What is the vision so that people come to East Portland and stimulate the economy here?
I think that's a perfect question that has really never been asked by the city. You know, we will never meet our, we will never meet our goals of the vibrant community that we want if we don't have more jobs. We will never meet our transportation goals. We'll never meet our climate goals if we don't have more jobs. There are not enough jobs in East Portland to support the people who live here, so everybody gets in their car and drives to inner southeast or downtown. And that's why 84 sucks. That's why all the main thoroughfares suck. And it's why we're having pedestrian deaths that are increasing. We're having bad behavior on our streets. We're not meeting our climate goals for climate emission. It's jobs. It's jobs. And we need to be really intentional. I'm cautiously optimistic about the new TIF districts in East Portland that will be bringing a significant influx of economic development dollars. I am deeply skeptical of how those dollars are being used, and I haven't yet seen a TIF district that I think has been successful. But it's a new day. I'm really, really interested in making sure that we are very intentional about bringing those jobs to East Portland and using whatever tools we have, including having a bigger conversation about economic development in this city.
Thank you. Next question.
Hi there. Hi, Jamie. I am from Park Rose Heights, and I'm a systems thinker. And what I constantly hear in the school district and even tonight at this meeting is a division between your political affiliation and other people in our community who don't necessarily think like you do or vote like you do. I'm an independent. I think for myself. I'm not a party voter. But I'm constantly thinking, I'm getting there, I'm constantly hearing you guys focusing and slamming people that might have voted differently. How are you going to integrate people that think differently than you do or talk differently than you do about the current administration? Because I find it problematic that we're talking negatively. So how can we change that?
I care about my community, and if somebody is going to come and hurt my community, even if they're the president, I'm going to respond. So that's why I'm responding in that way. It would be different if President Trump was helping to bring dollars into our community, helping to, you know, not targeting people who are my, you know, can be my family. So I think he is an elected official, too. He also deserves the criticism that if he's not meeting his goals, and I don't see him meeting Portland's goals, so that's what I'm commenting on. It's not, these are nonpartisan roles, right? My goal is to ensure that the city, you know, the streets work, the lights work, we have police that respond, right? That is our job as a municipal government. But we rely on the federal government to get funding to, you know, for our housing, for our transportation. And if he is actively harming, it doesn't matter if it's Trump, any administration that is harming our citizens, I'm going to speak out about that. So that's, when I speak about that, that's what I'm referring to. You know, as far as how we're going to make sure that people of all political affiliations are participating, I mean, I think we're already doing that. I think we obviously can do more of that, right? But I think these kinds of spaces, you know, you notice, nobody asked you who you voted for for president when you came in here, but we want to know what you want for your community, and that's why I'm speaking out about that presidency in particular.
Thank you. We've got time for one quick question.
Quick being the key word. Hi, Rachel Jamison. She, her pronouns, Park Rose resident, Portland Water Bureau employee, and a member of the City of Portland Professional Workers Union. As we're talking about budget cuts and vacant positions, positions that are vacant because we've had to cut our budgets, and removing particularly equity positions that are duplicative. And one of the most important steps when making equity-based decisions is thinking about unintended consequences. So what data and equity factors will you, as a council, be using and instructing the executive level to use when they are deciding which of our programs to cut and which of us public servants will be laid off?
I plan to use an equity lens on every dollar that I help to appropriate. I'm not convinced yet that one equity officer for the entire city is enough because we have to be intentional and we have to be deliberate. And the way that you can be intentional and deliberate, if you have folks who are in those bureaus, that their responsibility is to make sure that that equity lens is used. So I don't have a problem with the number of equity officers. I have a problem with the number of absent FTEs that we have, which is about 855. And we can do something better in terms of people labeling different jobs as hard-to-feel jobs. Analyst. Okay. Communications person. I mean, hard-to-feel jobs? No, they're not hard-to-feel jobs. But I understand fully why they do it because they don't know if their executive is going to call for a constraint, another 5% constraint. So they're holding on to FTEs so that they can pay for the constraint and cut FTEs and not cut people. So that's my sense.
Thank you. I think Bobby has some closing remarks.
Can we say thank you to these folks? So that concludes our program. Thank you so much, Candace, Jamie, and Loretta, for such a great discussion here tonight. We wish you the best in your new roles. And thank you, Sophie, for your expert moderation throughout this entire series. Again, if we could. Thanks to the Standard AARP Oregon and Fight Against Sex Trafficking for their sponsorship, and thank you so much to each of you for spending your evening with us. City Club upcoming events include the Serious Prescription for Central City Livability starting Friday, March 7th, at University Place Hotel in downtown Portland. This is a lunchtime program, just as a reminder. And lastly, please join us as a member or consider a contribution if you enjoyed tonight's program. Now, please join us for a casual meet and greet with your new District One city councilors. Good night, everyone.
Woo-hoo.